Well, good morning, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Good morning.
Can they hear?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. Good morning, morning. Before we, before we get started, let me say this. I just want to acknowledge one of the good things that are happening in our city, and I think it's worth acknowledging. As of last week, three of our high schools, Creekside, Langston Hughes, and Wesley, were all in the football playoffs. As of last Friday, two of our schools still remain in the playoff. As Wesley, as Creekside played a bold game, but lost in the end. So I, I would say to the people in our city, to the people who are on our council, to the people who work for us, let's give our three schools, because very seldom you find a city with three schools in a regional championship. Let's give our schools, no matter where we are at this minute, let's give our schools a round of applause and show them that we support them on everything they do.
Mayor, is there anyone possible you can let us know where the playoff games are for Langston Hughes and Wesley? Have someone email that to the, uh, to the council? So that if any of, any one of us want to go out and support. I know I saw a post with Langston Hughes was asking for some assistance for, I think, some, um, they were asking for some assistance. I can't remember what it was for. But I would like, if possible, for some of us to, to support both of the schools.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Willis. I would definitely have that for you. And of course, in the playoffs, it's game by game, but we pray that both of our schools that are, are still left, that they go on, uh, to become regional champions and stay South Fulton strong. All right. Thank you all so much for allowing me to do that. Uh, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and the general public. This is the roll call for the work session for December 8th at 10:00 a.m. The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Here.
The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District One.
Here.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gilier, District Four.
Here.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Anavor.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District Six.
Present.
The Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum for this meeting?
Call the first presentation, please.
First presentation? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just a point of information, Mr. Mayor, is, is, uh, the, is the meeting streaming on YouTube? Or is the stream frozen? People are saying that they, they can't see you.
Mr. Clerk, could you?
Yeah, Miss, uh, Councilmember Khalid, I'll check with our vendor. Uh, he did notify me, uh, a couple of minutes ago that the stream is active, and actually, he just indicated that it is active currently.
I think if it continues, Mr. Khalid, see if there, if you get those kind of messages again, then we'll go back and look at it, okay? Mr. Khalid?
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. First presentation, please.
First presentation is Stormwater Management Program Overview, Public Works Department in Jacobs.
Good morning, Mayor Edwards and City Council members. In the absence of Mr. Valenzuela, I am going to give a very brief update and introduction regarding, uh, this particular presentation, and then I'm going to turn it over to our, um, representative from Jacobs. Um, as part of the city's charter, uh, we are required to adhere to National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Uh, this system consists of, number one, cities are required to obtain an MS4 permit and develop stormwater management programs to provide permit coverage for stormwater discharges. And number two, this permit and associated management programs help prevent polluted stormwater runoff from being transported through municipal separate stormwater systems, MS4s, and discharged into local water bodies. Um, the city through Jacobs team, um, Public Works and CDRA are making necessary strides to become compliant. Um, recently, the city, we approved six stormwater ordinances to support MS4 regulations. Um, we did the Settlement and Erosion Control Ordinance, Post-Development Stormwater Management for New and Redevelopment, Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination, Stream Buffer Protection, Litter Control, and Construction Site Manage, Construction Site Waste Management. Um, the Jacobs team through Eric Guth, um, is here this morning to provide a brief overview of the MS4 program. So, Mr. Guth, I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name, so I'm gonna turn it over to you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, yes, actually Guth, but that, that's very close. Um, appreciate the, uh, mayor and city council giving us an opportunity to talk about the MS4 program this morning. Excuse me. Um, Corey, can we move on to the next slide? So, as Tammy mentioned, and I, I won't belabor some of the things that she's already spoken about, but this is a brief description on the MS4 permit, what that stands for. Municipal, meaning that it's the, it's owned and operated by the city. That's all of the stormwater inlets, catch basins, ditches, pipes, et cetera. Uh, one important point I'd like to point out here is that it's separate from the sanitary sewer. A lot of, a lot of folks don't understand or realize that this is a separate system from what goes down your drain at your home, for example, that goes into the sanitary sewer pipe that goes to the wastewater treatment plant where that water is treated. Um, this is rainwater, water running off of properties that goes through pipes and ends up in detention ponds or rivers and streams. So that's the distinction between stormwater and wastewater. The, uh, and then the other three S's, so the MS4, meaning four S's, the other three S's is Storm Sewer System, which is all of the structures and, um, uh, facilities that make, make the system work for the city. Uh, next slide, please. Um, as Tammy mentioned, this is a regulation from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division, that requires the city to obtain an MS4 permit to maintain, um, their, their storm management and, and their storm sewer system for the city. Next slide, please. Uh, Tammy also enumerated these ordinances. These are the ordinances that the council recently passed, approved, and these are, uh, set up the regulations or allow us to regulate, uh, stormwater activities in the city. Next slide, please. So now going to talk a little bit about what, uh, what's required of getting the MS4 permit. There are six minimum, excuse me, minimum control measures, and they're listed here on this slide. However, uh, I'm gonna go into more detail on the next several slides, so if we could just move on to the next one, please. So first is they require, the state requires public education and involvement. Uh, this is educating the public, um, what stormwater is, uh, what, what you can and cannot do related to, uh, dumping materials or waste, uh, into the system and why that's not a good idea. Um, ultimately, uh, these, the storm, storm sewer system leads to rivers and lakes and streams within the city um, and, and detention ponds as well. So, uh, we are required to publish education articles in the city's newsletter, also post these, um, and others to the website. They, uh, we're also required as part of the public education program to put brochures, um, out at city facilities or any, any public facility such as a fire station, et cetera, for the public to have access to this information. Uh, it also will be part of the social media program, uh, working with Communications Department at the city. In addition, there is a involvement, uh, program that's required. So this is getting citizens involved with stream, stream cleanup events, uh, storm drainage marking events. This is where you go out and actually put markers on the inlets, informing the public that, hey, this drains to rivers, or this drains to streams. Um, and then we all, we already do some of these things. Uh, one of the things we do, uh, do currently is some of the recycling events, uh, that we do twice a year at the city. Uh, so then all of this information, uh, all these activities are reported on an annual basis back to EPD, uh, showing them that we are complying with the permit. Next slide, please. Next is illicit discharge detection and elimination. So what this is, is where you have a business, you may have a business that has, that's discharging from their, uh, manufacturing, as an example, and they have discharge coming out of that manufacturing, uh, operation, and that's supposed to be handled appropriately, not just dumped into the storm drain. So instead of putting chemicals or heavy metals into the system, uh, they're required to contain it on site and dispose of it appropriately. So the city, as part of their MS4 permit, is charged with going out and performing investigations, uh, doing what they call dry weather screenings. So what that means is if you don't have a rain event or, uh, snow event, uh, where you've got runoff that's provided by Mother Nature, and yet you see some runoff happening, you can trace that back to a business that may need to be educated on how best to maintain their runoff and not dump it into the storm sewer system. So we will have inspectors that will go around and educate the businesses as well as, uh, eliminate any of these illegal discharges. Next slide, please. Construction site stormwater runoff control. So this is primarily working with CDRA and the land development, uh, inspectors. So this is working with the contractors and developers to ensure that they are following the erosion control measures as part of their construction activity, making sure they have tracking pads installed at their sites, excuse me, sites, so they're not tracking dirt and waste into the roadway. Um, and then also following up with them on a regular basis, uh, making sure that they're maintaining all of these, uh, uh, erosion control fences and so forth, and, uh, temporary detention ponds, and keeping them clean and, and cleaned out so that if there are events, we don't have an issue with, uh, runoff from these sites. Next slide, please. So after they've developed, after the private developers have developed their subdivision or their commercial property, uh, then it becomes, and, and we've accepted these improvements, then it becomes the responsibility of the city to maintain those permanent structures and improvements related to stormwater. So this is all the pipes, the inlets, uh, curb and gutter, et cetera. That would fall under Public Works and the city to maintain those, uh, structures in, in, in the future. There's also a component for green infrastructure and low impact development. That is something that is done through the, excuse me, through the land development process with CDRA, uh, which promotes, uh, green infrastructure and low impact development. Next slide, please. So lastly, there is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So this is ensuring that what we are doing, that we're walking the talk. So what we're doing is not impacting or adversely impacting the stormwater system. So all of the maintenance activities, paving, um, pothole repairs, herbicides, um, pesticides that are used as far as, uh, maintaining the rights of ways. All of those are the proper products. They're stored properly, and they're used, they're used appropriately out in the field. Also, at the municipal facilities, we are responsible for storage and containment of chemicals and things that could also impact the system. Next slide, please. So how will this affect the city of South Fulton? Um, not only is it a state and federal mandate, it's also, it also has benefits, uh, to the city. So it will improve water quality. Um, it also helps with flooding. Uh, some of the requirements of the permit allow us to do things, uh, a little bit more, um, quickly and as well as, uh, responsibly. The, uh, helps with the flooding, excuse me, sinkhole repairs, illicit discharge, which we already spoke about. Um, also helps with providing better development throughout the city. And then there's the education component, uh, which helps educate the public as to why we do things the way that we're doing them or what we can't, relative to the storm sewer system. Next slide, please. So, uh, we've got a, uh, video commercial that we developed with Keep South in cooperation with Keep South Fulton Beautiful and Jacobs. We'd like to show the council, and, uh, if you approve, we'd like to put this out on the website. Also, uh, it'll be a tele, a local television commercial, uh, for part of our public education requirement as part of the permit. So Corey, I think we have to hit Control and then hit the hyperlink, or hold down the Control button and hit the hyperlink, and that should start the video.
Ms. Caldwell, is it working for you?
No, it wants me to stop sharing my other screen to start the video.
Starting in the, in the presentation. It's supposed to be embedded, and you just hit Control and click on it. Is that not working?
It's starting, it's starting on my end, but I guess you all can't see it. When I click it, it starts.
Well, Mr. Mr., uh, Adams?
Yes.
You still working it? Let me, let me acknowledge some of the council person for remarks, okay?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, uh, so I have, um, a suggestion. If, um, Mr. Adams, if, if you can give him the ability to share, kid, is it possible he could play it from his, uh, his device? And then my question is, um, is there any consequences? I, I appreciate this presentation, and I'm glad that, uh, we are coming into compliance with the charter, um, requirement as it relates to stormwater drainage. Um, and I heard you speak of, you know, whenever you find businesses or, uh, that are not, that have illegal runoff, um, that you, you know, will go throughout the city, inspect and educate. But my question is, if we have businesses, once you have done that, that refuse to come into compliance, uh, do we have any mechanism to, um, to enforce the law, or do we have anything to, to help them, uh, to force them into compliance? Is this where EPA and, um, all of that comes in? So I don't, is, is, is this a question for Eric, or is this something that, well, let's start with Eric?
Sure. Um, yes, the answer is yes, we do have, uh, some, uh, ability to, uh, fine, um, and stop work, uh, within your ordinances that you approved. So you have an illicit discharge ordinance that gives us the ability to enforce, uh, the, um, the requirements of not doing illicit discharge, if you will. Um, our first choice is to go out and educate first and work with those businesses. But as you mentioned, if we have, uh, a business that is not complying, uh, there is provisions within the ordinance, um, and, uh, locals, as well as state law that we can rely on to go to further steps if necessary.
Okay, thank you. And my second question probably is more so for the city manager, um, Jones. City manager Jones, when we, whenever, if, you know, I hope that we don't have a lot of businesses that are out of compliance. Um, but if we do, um, you know, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, that you all are giving businesses an opportunity to be educated and come into compliance. But the, 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 what I'm asking you, um, and if we have to do a policy to do so, because I know Councilmember Gomes and I are working on a communication policy. Um, is there any way the council, the governance of the city can be informed when we, or get some type of report where these inspections are done and what's identified? And what mechanism are being used to bring the business into compliance?
I would say, yes, we, we can definitely communicate that to you. Um, I will get with our Republic Works Director. He does apologize. He had a family, uh, matter to deal with on today, but I can get with him to, uh, figure out a way for us to best communicate that to you because we definitely don't want you all to be caught off guard and not aware of, of any of those businesses who are not in compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions. And my question has to do more with issues that we have in the residential community. Uh, and I think, uh, Mr. Reeves can chime in on this when you'd like, Mr. Reeves. We just visited a community on Old National Highway where there's, there are issues of stormwater runoff. My problem is, and we, we take, uh, Jacobs and stuff out with us, but we, at the end of the day, we don't get a reasonable solution, even, even if it's on the community. We don't leave them with a reasonable solution as to how they can solve our problems. And, uh, Mr. Reeves, do you agree with that?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I absolutely do, and, uh, I was going to, uh, I was in the queue to speak about that issue as well. And so, uh, we have those, uh, uh, communities that, um, that have, uh, stormwater, not just runoff, but an inadequate runoff system from the detention pond, and it's actually rerouting and going into people's, uh, backyards, causing, uh, flooding and severe erosion. Uh, and there are some that's on hills, and as well as some areas that have stormwater runoff that doesn't even have drainage system put in place, uh, for us to check, uh, or to evaluate. And so my question is, how will this, um, program address those issues, uh, particularly that's damaging to people's property and is causing, uh, structural, uh, issues as well?
And let me say this before you answer that. You know, we're not saying that the, the city has to be responsible for everything. What we're saying is, is that when we as city officials go out to look at something, then we expect that you come back with a viable solution, even if the, uh, the, uh, the people in the subdivision have to bear the cost. But what usually happens is, we'll go out and look at, oh, it's a bad deal. We need, you didn't do this, do that. But that's not giving them any suggestions on how to resolve that problem. So I just want to piggyback on that. Mr. Are you there?
Yes. Um, so let's, um, I, I don't disagree with any of the comments. There are, there are issues out there. We have created and we continue to create a backlog list of issues. Um, as far as the, uh, and I, and I hear you, Mayor, on the, you know, being, being able to give them a viable solution or timeframe. Um, a lot of what we, a lot of what this program's going to provide is a, uh, a framework, if you will, for how we fund, uh, this program, how this, and with funding and resources, uh, we'll be able to do more than we are currently doing. The, um, so a lot of this has to do with, uh, funding. It has to do with, um, discovering the problems and prioritizing those problems to fit within the, uh, um, the current budget. The, uh, so as we work our way through, uh, this program and implement, implementation of this program, uh, one of the big discussions is, is how do we fund the program? Which is actually coming in a few more slides as part of this presentation. So the, um, uh, once the funding is in place and the, uh, we've got a good plan of action going forward, a master plan, if you will, for the whole system, which would include some of these larger problems, issues. We've got infrastructure out there that's, you know, more than 50 years old and is starting to deteriorate. Uh, we've, we've had a really wet year last year. Um, so Mother Nature has a piece in this as well. So there is a lot of things that need to happen throughout the system. And I think if, I think you will see a big impact over the next several years as we, as we put more investment into this system, which is going to benefit those, those local issues as well. Uh, and, and I agree, there are some, there are some cases where it's not a public issue. It is a private issue. Um, but there is quite a few public issues out there that we, that we need to address as well.
Right, and two other things that I'm finished. You know, one is, we have been dealing with an issue with a constituent by the name of Marcus Coleman. And we've been, this is a year, these are years going on and on, on about the same situation. And I don't feel, at some point, and during the explanation, I felt that there was some responsibility on government. I may be totally wrong, but during the explanation, I felt that way. I don't want to be having another four years and, uh, with Mr. Coleman on a situation that's, that's seven, eight years old. So my, my thing, just like the other, is that let's resolve the issue, tell people what they can do, tell them what we can do, and let's move on. So I just want to make that. The last item is this. Uh, what about the erosion control on municipalities that border us? That may cause us some environmental issues? Such as soap fencing?
So I, you know, ideally, uh, we'd like to work with the adjacent jurisdiction on that. Um, and I, I, I would, uh, I believe we do that currently when we know about it or when we can identify that it is coming from, from another property or, uh, municipality. Uh, we, we typically try to inform them of, of the issue and work, work through that as, as a partnership is how we like to, like to deal with that. Um, if we don't get compliance, that's where it gets a little bit more tricky as to, uh, what can be done there. I, that's, that might be a city attorney question. I'm not exactly sure if it's out of our jurisdiction, uh, what our, uh, abilities might be to resolve that.
I got you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may have one more question for them?
Go ahead, and then we'll go to Ms. Gilier.
Okay, and so, okay, with, with that being said, is that, uh, for the existing, uh, communities uh, that have been left, uh, what about, is there any recourse, uh, of action of going, uh, after the developers to incur some of the costs so the municipality doesn't have to incur the hundred percent cost? Is there any recourse of action that we can go back to, uh, them as far as the design, uh, that they implemented? And, um, it's just not adequately working?
uh, that they implemented and um is just not adequately working? And then also too, uh, and this goes out there to, to, I guess zoning or comprehensive views or subdivision regulations on how are we going to have better oversight on ensuring that these uh, stormwater solutions in the communities that's, that's being constructed are uh adequate, uh effective and, and working. Uh, and it used before we sign off and turn these over to the municipality and uh constituents.
Sure. So you touched on a couple of things there. As far as the design, that is typically done up front, um, and that's done through CDRA and the Development Engineering Division. Uh, looking at their erosion control plans, which will be part of their application and making sure that it's adequate and appropriate. Now, now this is for construction typically. Well, I, I take that back. It would be for construction as well as permanent improvements as well. Um, so making sure that the uh, the developer's engineer designs it for the proper uh runoff condition, um, rain event, et cetera, that the pipe is sized appropriately and the detention pond or whatever receiving body is sized appropriately. So that is done up front. And then um during construction, uh, we have been working with uh CDRA and the engineering development folks to ensure that they have, one, the personnel to do the review in the beginning. Two, they have the inspectors to go out and inspect the erosion control measures, the temporary construction uh improvements, as well as the permanent improvements. And they do have the inspectors to do that. Um, and then three, the other component of that is training. Making sure that the folks that we have going out looking at these things are trained appropriately to look for them. The uh, as far as the, um, so that's on the design and the upfront end and the during construction side. And then as far as holding them responsible for their improvements, part of that is part of that uh, weekly or bi-weekly inspection practices uh by CDRA and working with the developer and the contractor to ensure that they're, uh, what's being built is appropriate and meets the design. And then lastly, if the design is deficient later, um, we have a, we have typically a year before we accept these improvements. So there's a year that we can monitor the site. And if there's any problems or any failures in the uh construction of those improvements, it's on the developer. After that year and after we've done the final walkthrough and punch list and they've completed all that, we accept those improvements. Now they are the ownership of the city. So it's much more difficult at that time to go back and get anything from them. So that one-year warranty period is very important and one that typically we see failures within the first year. So usually, um, if you haven't had a failure in the first year, it's not going to fail after that, other than just uh requiring regular maintenance.
Okay, I'll, I'll I'll have one more uh question that's from Ms., I'm sorry, Ms., well, two more. One from Ms. Gilliard and the, the others from Ms. Ral.
What I was going to say
We can't hear you.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Ms. Gilliard, can you hear us?
Yeah, wait, 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 wait. I'm trying to get back in. Can you hear me now?
Vaguely, but I hear you.
Okay, um, um, he said an awful lot of what I was gonna say uh about on the front end. On the front end, um, on the front end and, and answer to uh Councilman uh Reeves. When the inspect, when the final inspection is done and before the developer leaves, we have to make sure as a city that stormwater is taken care of so that we don't have to be in the position that we're in right now, paying for it on the uh other side. And as a part of the subdivision, um, turnover ordinance, that was what it was written for, uh, to make sure that that would be in place. And it only affects those uh subdivisions that come into existence after it was written. Everything before that, and there are an awful lot of subdivisions that have those stormwater issues. And I learned that from learning about it in my own community and, and just um um, how, how difficult it can be to deal with it and that there needed to be something up front to make sure that the developer was held accountable. And that was the turnover ordinance and, and my, my subdivision was the only one in the city that went through it. And so, um, we really, really learned a lot about it. And now we're on the other side of it, and I am sure that there are a lot of subdivisions with um with those stormwater issues. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to, to pay. Instead of, of, of thinking about the developer, we need to go back to Fulton County because Fulton County at the time was responsible, but um, I think the time has passed for, for that, but I'm just happy that, that we have this program and that we're going to deal with it. And I know that it's a big issue.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Uh, Councilmember Ral?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Goose, is it um something that our city should be looking at? The current uh maybe design standards we have in place um via our ordinances relative to what's being installed to make sure that we have um developers who are innovating or bringing the most up-to-date and current solutions? Have you, have you all looked at that at all?
Um, you know, Councilmember Ral, uh, not, I have not, I guess is the simple answer. Um, typically what I'm, I'm accustomed to, there are some uh industry-wide standards as to how you calculate um impact from rain. Rain is typically is the biggest concern in um, in South Fulton. And so there is uh, I don't want to say standard, but best, best management practices related to how you calculate the frequency of storms and the intensity of storms. And then how, and then it relates to your topography and uh ground cover as to how quickly that water uh moves across land, excuse me, moves across land and um fills up a street, for example, it gets into yards and then ultimately gets into basements and or homes. So that's all built into your uh requirements uh related to land development and through CDRA. Their, their uh subdivision regulations uh require that they have an engineer calculating all of that and size the uh structures appropriately. Um, I think what, what you're seeing is you're seeing many, many years of, um, you know, development and, you know, probably not enough maintenance and uh replacement of those structures. Um, and unfortunately, you know, and it's true in most cities, a lot of the boom happens at one time. So a lot of your infrastructure is around the same age, so it's exacerbated by the fact that it's all kind of fifty, sixty, seventy years old. And seeing um, uh uh, infrastructure start to crumble and start to fail. Uh, the other problem you have is fifty, sixty years ago, um, regulations were a little looser. Things were not as tight as far as uh, observation and control by the cities. And so uh, it may not be installed the way that it's installed today. So that, I know that's kind of a roundabout answer to your question. But I, but I think that there is uh some good, good ordinances in place. And I think you've got a good staff that's doing that, those reviews today. Uh, but we've inherited some older infrastructure that needs, that needs to be addressed.
And uh, thank you for that. So um, it may be worth looking at, but I also want to uh reiterate something that was stated earlier. Uh, we have a lot of these HOAs who may be responsible for detention ponds and and um, in their communities. And I think, you know, at a minimum, if it's a, a list of qualified contractors who can work on maintenance of those things that might help again, giving them some kind of direction to go in. Um, because I, I just think it's important that they have some kind of guidance about maintenance on this. So uh, hopefully Public Works can work on that. And we begin to think about these things as we begin to think about the next round what we're gonna do with T's block, our next block.
Yes, I think that's a great comment. And we have spoken with several of the HOAs about the detention ponds. Um, a lot of it is educating them on what, uh, who owns it, who has the responsibility for maintaining it and what, uh, what needs to happen and, and the frequency of that maintenance. So we have some conversations with that. I think that's a, it's a good suggestion that we could put out on the web. And, and again, we do get calls uh periodically from various HOAs concerned about their ponds. Uh, but I think we can put some education materials out on the uh, the city's website uh, as well as possibly, that, that could be an article in a newsletter to, from HOAs of, of their responsibilities.
Thank you for that.
Sure. So getting back to the video commercial, we're having issues with the embedded parts. Um, I can pull it up, but it's not within the presentation.
Well, um, why don't you send it to us individually?
That's what I was gonna suggest. If I could email it to everybody or have, uh, send it to Tammy and she could get it out to everybody. Um, we, uh, we think it's a, it's a good educational piece and like to get your input on it. Would like to get that out there possible. Okay.
All right, sooner the better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next slide, please. So we, we just have a few more slides wrapping up here. So the status of the permit. So we actually were designated by EPD, uh, the Environmental Protection Division um, as a city MS4 permitee, actually back in February twenty nineteen. And shortly after, not too, too long after, we uh took over Public Works from the, from the county. Uh, and then we submitted the initial application in August of twenty nineteen. Over the past year, we've been going back and forth with uh EPD regarding um our, our application, uh, answering questions, giving them more information. Uh, recently, we gave them the six ordinances that were approved by the council. And so we anticipate EPD granting us the permit in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. So that's gives you kind of a timeline of what we're looking at. I guess a, a footnote to that is they expect us to be maintaining our system even though we don't have a permit. So we're already doing a lot of the things that they want us to do. There's a lot more that we still need to do. And there is some uh costs and additional resources we're going to need to fulfill the permit in its entirety. Our goal is to have uh full compliance with the permit um with next year's budget, so in twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. So here is a very preliminary uh cost estimate of what this program uh might cost. So it's, it's broken down into operations and maintenance. So this is all the, all the things that we do related to the system, maintaining the system. And then there's also the MS4 requirements, which we spoke about earlier, the uh, the six uh minimum control measures. So this is the education, public involvement, illicit discharge program, uh, construction sites, uh, post-construction, the pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So broke it out into two different categories and then took a look at what we're already doing, which is the third column over in that table. So there's a lot of things we're already doing, such as street sweeping. Um, you know, taking care of some of the uh, the ditches and the inlets. Um, and then the, the litter management, which also uh ends up clogging our system. Uh, so picking up the litter that we do currently in the rights of ways. And then um, so that all amounts to about nine hundred fifty thousand. Uh, however, the total, total program is estimated to be around three point three. So that leaves a balance of about two point three million that we need to talk about and figure out how we're going to fund. Uh, this would help fund all the resources and um activities related to, to the program. Next slide, please.
Uh, we have three more items on the agenda. Are you, how many more slides do you have?
I'm almost done. In fact, we can skip this slide. Um, I guess the, the main point of this slide is, is this is um a mandate from the state and the federal government. However, they're really, they don't fund these kinds of activities. There's grants for other things, but not for this. So the two point three million is on us. Um, so how are we going to fund this? Uh, one, one solution is to take a look at a stormwater utility. What this is an enterprise, so there would be a uh, um, there would be a cost to the, what we call the users, which is the residences and the businesses um, on a uh quarterly basis or however, however we want to charge that. But it's based on uh impervious surfaces, which is asphalt, roofs of homes, sidewalks and those kinds of things. And then uh, that helps you have a dedicated revenue source to implement this program. So the utility uh would be its own separate enterprise. So everyone working within the utility would be funded through this, through this revenue. And I don't want to get into a lot of detail here because it's something I think we'd like to bring back to council for a later discussion. Um, but this is just something we want to throw out to you to start to think about. Next slide, please. So these are some of the surrounding cities and DeKalb County who currently have a stormwater utility. Uh, the long and the short of this is, is on average, the utility collects about two and a half million. The uh, cost to the resident is about six dollars a month. So, and not to the resident, to a household, to a household. So um, that, that equates to about seventy-two dollars a year uh per household to uh help fund this program. Next slide, please. So in summary, um, as we talked about in, in some detail, we do have a backlog of issues that need to be addressed. Um, once we have the funding, we can be a lot more immediate and show measurable benefits to the city through improvements to the system. Uh, a user fi- fee-funded program is, in our opinion, the fairest way to fund this mandated stormwater program. And so what we would like to do is come back to you in a separate discussion over the next eight to, six to ten months and talk about um how best to address this pro- or how best to fund this program. And with that, entertain any questions anybody might have.
Okay, uh, Eric, let me first apologize to you. I thought that when you got down to the video, it was about through and I entertained questions and I'm sorry about that. Uh, we have three more items on the, on these agenda, but Ms. Willis, if, if you can take two minutes. Uh, so if we can move forward, I see you in the queue.
Yes, um, I have one question. Uh, my question is, how often are you all, uh, is a street sweeper going out?
Sure. So right now, our street sweeping program, excuse me, is twice a year. So we go out after a leaf drop in the fall, typically uh late November. And we sweep the, uh, we sweep the streets then and then also in the spring. So after winter time, uh, we, we go and sweep for the, for the summer.
Okay, and, and Mayor, um, you know, I know we don't limit the time, but uh I'll, I'll, I'll defer this to when we discuss when we have in the next council meeting, but I did share for the purposes of the uh, public, the link in the YouTube. Um, but we really need to consider giving ample enough time for important discussions like this, even if this has to be the only item on a work session agenda. Thank you.
I heard you. Mr. Kirk, next, please.
Yes, sir. Next item. Discussion Comprehensive Plan Update, CDRA Department.
Okay, good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, wait for the slide to come up, but I would like to first thank you all for the opportunity to present to you our first, well, our first update for the comprehensive plan. Uh, this will serve as one of our next milestones for the city, so we're pretty excited to present this over to you. So today I'm gonna give you details of how we can carry that process out as well as answer any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. So as you know, your comprehensive plan identifies community, creating goals.
Ms., Ms. Reeves- Ms. Ms. Reed is going out. I can barely hear. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, you were going out.
I apologize. Maybe I need to get a little closer to the speaker. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Okay. So it allows for us to speak on the basis of the zoning subdivision and land use regulations. Of course, those are items that your staff uses daily to operate and provide details in their daily work. The, the comprehensive plan, of course, serves as a master, master plan. It speaks on the blueprint. It tells exactly how a community will move for the next 20 years. It goes into grander details and identify laws, policies and programs that would be able to achieve such goals. It identifies the stakeholders. It allows for the stakeholders to provide guidance and tells pretty much what they're looking to see. So once that schedule is created, we're inviting for all public to participate, whether it be residents or just property owners. We're looking to have all individuals give us some guidance on how to move this plan forward. Next slide, please. So the 2014 Georgia municipal, excuse me, Georgia minimal planning standards requires three at a minimum areas that we address. Of course, that would be your needs and opportunities, which would be to identify the city's strengths and weaknesses, things that we've seen in the past that we'd like to address before. Community goals. It identifies the desired activities, how we're wishing to move those items forward as well. And then lastly, which is a very important component of the comprehensive plan, it identifies a work program that will initiate, tells, it tells the activities, how we're planning to move them forward, as well as give the actual deadline that we're looking to have those items done. That particular program is used to identify by the state if we're in actual moving this file forward in the direction that was adopted. Next slide, please. So little history really quickly. We adopted our existing comprehensive plan by work that was performed under Fulton County in 2016. We adopted to use it filed in 2017. And from there, our master plan has granted us our QOG status in 2018. The qualified local government status basically grants us the opportunity to apply for funding. Without this QOG status, we would not be applicable or able to apply for such funding. So it's very important to note that the past Fulton County document has allowed for us to be eligible for funding thus far. We are up for a adoption for October 31st, 2021. Next slide, please. To move it forward, what's next? So the average cost to move a comprehensive plan forward with regards to the work to be carried out from a consultant would be averaging around 300,000. We have identified and had conversations with the ARC where they can do it at no cost. They've done a number of communities within their region. I've identified at least four here. Most close, of course, would be Douglasville, but these are plans that have been carried out by the ARC. Examples are available online. At your next regular session meeting, I'm asking for you to provide an agreement to sign the memorandum of agreement, which is your MOA for this project. I'm available for any questions at this time.
Mayor, I have a question. This is Councilwoman Ralph. So this is the work session. Are you saying that memorandum of under, of agreement is on our regular council agenda or our next meeting in January?
No, ma'am. I'm sorry. I should have been clear on that. It's at your next meeting today at 12:00.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
Mr. Khalid, I'm sorry. I was muted and I did see your name come up in the queue. So you could go ahead, sir, if you have a question. Mr. Khalid? Okay. Then I'm, I, I recognize Councilmember Gons.
Hi. Good afternoon. Well, not good afternoon, good morning. For this, and I know we've talked about this on many occasions in regards to a plan, a master plan or a comprehensive plan. Can you please make sure that we're clear on that? So just for the edification for the public, that this is the plan that we're doing to help us with adjusting for our city?
Absolutely. So even though the one, the plan that we're using today is Fulton County's past document, this is officially the first comprehensive plan update that the city will carry out under the guidance of the City of South Fulton stakeholders. That would be council, of course, and then residents and staff. That file will be drafted based on the City of South Fulton's guidance versus that was previously provided by Fulton County. And of course, as I mentioned, that's of course up for adoption, October 31st, 2021.
So there's still time for public input and?
We haven't started yet. Yes, ma'am. We haven't started public input. As I mentioned, once the schedule is created, we'll make that available to our website. We'll have a plenty of opportunity for the public to weigh in. It's a great opportunity for the residents to give their vision for the next 20 years of where South Fulton lands as it provides to development standards, as it provides to where they're seeing particular areas of, of interests as identified in the plan as a node. So those type of opportunities will be available for residents. And so we strongly encourage, just as we always have done, but we strongly encourage residents and other stakeholders to come out to allow for us to be guided by their direction.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. I would acknowledge that this time, Ms. Councilmember Willis.
Yes. So I would like to reiterate what Ms. Reed just stated, that we need to encourage all of our residents to participate in this process for this plan does deal with future land use of the land in our city. And we have the most undeveloped land in the, in Fulton County. And for my district specifically, we have the Red Oak Historic District. That's a part of the TAD. And we want to make sure that we, as residents, have always advocated for go ahead and get established a overlay for that Highway 29 area, Red Oak Historic District, so that we can have certain standards in place to help develop how we want that area to look aesthetic wise. I do have a question. And this is no slight to ARC. I think they do amazing work. I love their work. And I love the subject matter expertise they have. This study is going to cost roughly about $300,000. And are we in line with our procurement policies to singularly, to single hand pick them as the vendor that's going to oversee this process? Are we supposed to put this out as a bid to give other companies an opportunity to handle this workforce?
Okay. So forgive me. I'm not necessarily familiar with the actual process, but this is something that we identify, the ARC provides services directly to us as a government, as they're acting as a government is what I mean. So this is not something, this is just like GDOT providing the service to you. It's like MARTA providing the service to you. So it's the same.
Well, Ms. Reed, isn't this free?
Yeah.
Yeah. If it's free, then it would be exempt from, from those protocols.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I missed that big second bullet point where it says no additional cost. So the ARC will oversee this process for the City of South Fulton at no cost. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I missed that. That's even better.
Okay. I'll acknowledge again, Councilmember Khalid.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, is it? I, I see that this is on our consent agenda to be approved in about an hour. Is there any reason that we have to approve it today? I mean, it looks fine. It sounds really good. I just remember the last time we voted on something with a comprehensive plan, we, we ended up being dissatisfied. I'm just wondering if we could have more time to look this over and think about it, or do we have to vote on it today?
So Councilmember, let's see. Let's, let's identify the fact that your comprehensive plan is behind schedule as, as of today. We, we should have started this few months back, but we've been focusing on the zoning ordinance. The more we prolong this file being adopted, we're further behind the state's deadline. It takes about 12 months to get this project completed. This project is due in October of 2021. It's an opportunity to allow for a project to be carried out by the individuals who will review and approve it. Just so you know, once the product is created, the Atlanta Regional Commission is the first level of approval. After it leaves ARC, it travels over to DCA, the Department of Community Affairs for Georgia. So if one of the opportunities is to allow for the plan to be drafted by the first level of approval, I think that's a plan for us. They're giving us an opportunity to allow for the plan to be prepared and ready for adoption. So I don't understand. I would not prefer that we take any more months off of this plan. This is a need and a requirement by the state.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Khalid.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gilley.
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm happy that we're moving forward with the comprehensive plan. And in fact, most of the undeveloped land is in District Four. And I already see the movement of density. And I know how my constituents feel about that. So I'm really, really happy. And I will make sure that they attend those community engagement meetings so that they can get their voices heard and we can make sure that the comprehensive plan reflects what they, what they really want. So thank you.
Okay. And I, and I too, Ms. Gilley, I agree with you that, you know, it's time for the community, here's your opportunity. Here's your opportunity to make sure your voice is heard. And I would, I would tell each and every one of you, whenever those meetings are posted, please attend them and lend your voices. And that's all I would say about that. Thank you, Ms.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was, I was trying to get into queue. One quick question for Ms. Reed.
Go right ahead and we'll go to the next item.
Okay, Ms. Reed, for the edification out here for the public information, the comprehensive use plan, I agree, should go forward. As, but I saw also too, we're, we're looking at for this zoning rewrite to get approved. Now, that being said, there's a lot of things are coming in place for us, new standards, new ideas. And I'm asking a question for, is the zoning rewrite based on a comprehensive use plan? If we pass this on a rewrite, comprehensive use plan goes forward. And some things in that comprehensive use plan is now adequate for the constituents who want things to come, is possible to change the zoning ordinance to fit that in the comprehensive use plan?
That is a great question, Councilmember. So yes, but allow for, it allows for residents to give a vision and direction of how they're looking to see the city, as I mentioned, for 20-year focus. Some of those identifications will require for there to be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Councilwoman Willis hit on a great one. She's looking to have an overlay standard added into her district. That's going to be identified in the comprehensive plan. That then means that that zoning ordinance would need to be amended to allow for that creation to be made. So there will be several different areas where we can amend the zoning ordinance once we have identified some of the needs in the comprehensive plan. I must advise or give further direction that it is not wise and on a, on a legal stance for us to always update a zoning amendment every few months. Of course, once you do one or so here, you, you definitely would like for your zoning ordinance to not have to be amended. So I just want to put that, that little sticky note out there to make sure that when we're updating, we're not updating often.
Correct. But we don't have to update often, but once the update gets ready to come, we can update the different areas to fit into that module at one time.
As I mentioned, yes, sir. After the comprehensive plan, I'm definitely looking for an update to plan based on the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank, thank you so much. And I will ensure that in my, in the area I represent, we'll try to get the maximum participation possible. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Councilmember. And thank you all, Councilmembers.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. I'm present.
I just want to say this before you go. The mayors of South Fulton, in their meetings, their monthly meetings, especially in terms of transportation, they have, we have unanimously agreed that MARTA pays more attention to Highway 29 in that it goes through six of the eight cities here in South Fulton. And I say that because Ms. Willis mentioned the project, the Red Oak Historical District. And I think that MARTA has already told me that they would be a part of that. And as you go through your plan, I, I think that you need to know that, that it's going to probably happen where MARTA is going to be at the will of the, of the mayors, MARTA is going to play a big pic, big picture on Highway 92, I mean 29. Okay. You there?
Yes, sir. I received that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, thank God, will be next item, please.
Our next item is item three, discussion regarding the city council's draft meeting schedule for 2021. I'm bringing this item forward to the council for discussion. And I do have the draft schedule on the regular meeting agenda as well, if you choose to ratify it. The Department of Community Development and Regulatory Affairs, as well as the general public, have made inquiries about the council's meeting schedule. We wish to push this forward to the council for discussion so that we can hopefully approve a meeting schedule for 2021 to allow for public information. Thank you.
Mayor, can, can the schedule be brought up for the benefit of the public? Because that's also under consideration for adoption today, right? Mr. Adams?
Yes, on the regular meeting agenda, I'll pull it up now.
Thank you.
Hello?
He's pulling something up, Ms. Gilley.
Oh, okay. Give me two minutes. The system froze for one moment, but it's in the process of coming up.
Okay, Ms. Gilley, what did you want? What did you want to say?
Well, nothing. I just, everything, everything went dead and I didn't know if we were disconnected.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We're not. Councilmember Gons, did you have something you wanted to add?
So just so I'm clear, and I'm not, I can't necessarily remember, but we voted for these times or we're voting now for these times?
No, actually, these times were voted upon at the onset of the COVID pandemic. I believe that was in March. And since then, we've kind of operated under these times, given the COVID environment. And it's pretty much been month to month at this point.
And we'll probably continue until we get clearance from, I guess, the state of Georgia that? Or is it just on us when we decided we want to do the, or reopening plan to go back face to face?
I, 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 I think that's why we're putting this forward to get that discussion going. But I think that I would defer to the manager as well in terms of her opinion.
Mr.
Ms. Jones, there was a question proposed to you.
Yes, sir. So yes, Councilmember Gons, I would definitely say that until we get into a position where, you know, public health, state of Georgia, you know, tells us that we can reconvene in a setting, you know, that's more than a certain number of people that we at this time continue in the virtual setting. Unless, you know, this council chooses to do otherwise, that would be my recommendation. We do have a reopening plan. And, you know, I will definitely be reviewing that plan over the next month or so. And, you know, once we get a vaccine and we know that it's safe for everybody to be back together again, then I will be bringing forth a recommendation as far as reopening.
Mayor, I have, I'm in.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Okay. Does everybody see the, the schedule?
Yes.
Ms. Willis, go ahead.
And so we asked Ms., the former clerk, I don't want to call her name because she's no longer with us, and so I want to be appropriate. We asked the former clerk to send out a survey to the community to poll or get a post from the community on what times they would like to see our meetings. And we, we very well did that. And although it was, it was about 500 people who responded. And, but most of the responses came back saying they preferred our meetings to be in the afternoon. Now, I, I do think that we, we do need to get that under some consideration. I, I, I do think that. Um, I I do, I do think that six o'clock is too late to start, um, given the uh. The material that we have to cover, but I do think that we need to consider um, bringing our meetings. Uh, as as close to the afternoon as possible, like maybe three o'clock. Um, just for two reasons. I mean, we ran, uh. All of us with the commitment of making sure that we would have meetings that would accommodate the public. Uh, even the working public. One of the the constant things that I heard from people was that. They did not like the fact that the county commission meeting was ten o'clock and a lot of people couldn't get off work. Um, to attend those meetings. Uh, so I just want, I just, I would just ask the council that we keep that in mind. Let's not, let's not look what's happening today. Let's not look at, get blindsided by, you know, the uh, the small attendance. The goal for me is to make sure that our meetings are accessible and available to people who are working. And um, and who would like the, well, our residents, not just people who are working for our residents. To have the ability to attend. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Kalid.
Um, I just, I I noticed, I I, first, I don't disagree with Councilwoman Willis. Um, I I do think whenever this comes up, I'm just going to remind us that our. That our meetings in general run around six hours. So whenever we start, they. I can only think of one or two times in the history, in our three and a half year history, that we've had a meeting that was less than six hours. Um, so three to nine, I I guess would be fine. Um. When we have a vaccine and this pandemic is over prayerfully, prayerfully before summer of twenty twenty one. We usually keep um, the month of June open. Uh, that like first week is G M A and we just usually keep that month open. And I'm wondering. If we might do this. This this calendar has us meeting every month, including throughout the entire summer. Thanksgiving and Christmas week.
Okay.
And I just wonder if that is a realistic schedule.
Any comment?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
I I also want to reiterate the fact, our meetings are about six hours. They are um, lengthy. And while I think um, when I look back, and I think I shared that information with um, several of the council members. Our viewership is still pretty high. Even though they may not be watching it in real time. So when you look at the post view of our meetings. Constituents are still engaged. Um, also, the way our um, meetings are structured. They can still provide public comment, even leading up to a meeting. So. You know, they can do it over the weekend. It, you know, they don't have to do it in real time before they had to physically be there. They actually have more opportunity to provide public comment. And so um, I just, you know, we are in unique. In a unique situation. We won't always be in a space, but I think it has worked for the most part. As we move forward. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Well.
Ms. Ms. Willis, you're in the queue.
Okay, okay, thank you. And so I I I, you know, part of our jobs as elected officials to advocate for all. But especially to advocate for the least of these. And, you know, I have a district. Uh, and I have a lot of seniors in my district. And as a result of that, you know, my my budget reflects me doing a lot of mailing. Because a lot of seniors don't have the capability to log on. A lot of seniors don't know anything about YouTube. They don't know anything about, you know, uh, Zoom. And so, um, I get a lot of. Seniors telling me all the time, they appreciate the fact that I mail them because they don't get information until they are mailed. And so, y'all, yes, we may get, we are, we we may get pretty good attendance. But let's think about people who cannot, you know. Don't have the 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 technology capability um, to do all of these things. You know, we're not going to be here forever. We have to make sure that we keep in mind everybody. Thank you.
Okay, any further conversation? All right, hearing none, Mister Mister Clerk. Next item, please.
Yes, next item. Discussion, public comment at council regular meetings. Mister Mayor.
I think this is a great segue into uh, this particular topic. I've been talking to some of you and. And others, and we have been concerned about the fact that because of the pandemic. Uh, we have not been able to have people to come down and make uh, public comment. And I think that that puts some people at a disadvantage. I would love to see at some point in time that we go back to some type of public forum where people can come in. And and have their say so. So I've asked the clerk, and Mister Clerk, you can follow me on this to to look at some options for us. Uh. Post pandemic, pre pandemic, during pandemic, that we can get a a little more of the public. Comments outside of just sending a letter in to the clerk. Mister Clerk, you want to share anything?
Uh, yeah, I I don't have anything written to share, but I will say that um. Uh, my office, as well as the Department of Information and Technology, uh, have had discussions and we've also. Uh, reviewed and investigated other uh municipal governments in terms of how they are operating. In the COVID environment. Um, we are prepared to uh, follow the will of the council. And incorporate citizen public comment into the Zoom meeting. Uh, we also have the option of having citizens called into the Zoom meeting. Um, that is the extent of what we've looked at. I know some council members um, have some more. Um, uh, robust uh, public comment uh, scenarios. But I will uh, leave that to uh, the council to discuss.
Okay, Councilmember Kalid.
I'm sorry, um. I I have mentioned this before, uh. I have friends that serve in Athens Clark County and. They allow for people to come in in person and make public comments. Uh, they have a. I will just, I'm going to include in the chat a link to their um, county commission. Which includes videos of their meetings. But they um. I think it's important that we see people and that people see us. I I have found it a little challenging. That our cameras aren't on and on, I've seen comments on YouTube that people want to see our faces. I think that there is something critical to democracy and and policymaking. That people can look at us in our face when we are voting and when we are talking, and that they can see us. And that we can see them. So um, I I would like, one, for us to be able to uh. Show our faces on YouTube should we, should we decide to do that. And I also would like to see the people um. Speaking, uh, I would like for them to be able to use their own voice and I would like to be able to see their face if they were willing to come in. And make their comments on camera. Thank you.
And Mister Kalid, that is exactly why we, why I'm having this discussion because uh, to have people come down. They can publicly and personally uh, say what they have to say on any subject. So I'm I'm with you on that matter. As for your faces being, yeah, I don't have a problem sharing my face. It's a personal thing, I guess. If you don't want to share it, you can share it too. That's fine. But uh, I just wanted to uh. Have that conversation going, or we can arrive at something and Mister Kalid, uh. Councilmember Kalid, if you, if you have, Ms. Willis, hold on, you've talked twice.
No, that wasn't me. That was, wow.
Okay, okay, uh, if you, if you have some information, uh, share with the clerk as to what other folks are doing. Uh, that we can adopt maybe some or all of that, uh, to bring our people in. I will yield to Councilwoman Ralph.
Um, I do know within the Zoom feature, I don't know how we can incorporate, but um, I've used in my town hall meetings, the webinar feature. Um, I think there is some benefit. Um, I'm I'm not prone to want to open up the uh, city hall. For people just to give comment, but I do think they could be allowed into the meeting so we can actually hear their voices. Um, that's pretty much what I've heard, that, you know, they don't like where, uh, and this is not just for their council meetings, but some of our um. Our public hearings, our zoning information meeting, that they, their voice be heard just as the presenters who are presenting. So. I think that's a relatively easy way to fix and a, you know, a good middle of the road.
Well, I think that, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ralph. I think that uh, all of those solutions. Given to the city manager and to Cory, so that we can come up with some recommendation. Uh, to allow our people to come in and and speak for themselves. So I would recommend that as we look into this process. Uh, Ms. Adler, Jones, that we uh, you and the clerk. Be receptive of these comments and bring us, bring something back that would, that we think can work.
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
We can work together and come up with a recommendation for you.
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I I would just like to say in closing that uh, we're, the the clerk's office, uh, you know, we've had conversations with. Information technology. We're ready to move forward either way, uh, using the webinar function in Zoom or. Using the registration function. Um, we can uh, manage that very easily, uh, as well as the call in function. Uh, we just needed the policy that uh, decision that uh, the council uh, is okay with that direction. Uh, and as well as the the pictures, a decision was made early on for uniformity and aesthetics to. Uh, have everyone's picture shown uh, for consistency purposes. But. Again, we can uh, turn on the cameras and and if that's the will of the council, we are ready to move forward. I will work with. The city manager and the information technology department to bring back a recommendation um, before the next meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Jones, do you think they have something in thirty days?
I think that's a a reasonable time. Yes, sir.
Mayor Edwards, we we are forgetting one very important thing. Um, and. And this is really important. It wasn't that, it was for consistency purposes, and I'm addressing you, Mayor. That we didn't have our cameras sho- um, shown, but the most important thing, we did not turn on our cameras was because of security purposes. Um, and I did, and and I did um, tell Mister Adams. That there is a apparatus that can be ordered for all council members. It's a green screen. That you can attach to the back of your chair. Um, that will block out. Anything that's in your house. And then Zoom has a mechanism where you can pull up a background that can be shown on a green screen. And that will secure all council members from their personal homes being shown.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Willis. Okay, uh, I think that is a comment. Before we. Before we go, let me just make a suggestion right now. Because we have an aggressive, I think, an aggressive uh, uh, executive session. Uh, and we will, from the time we're here now, we would not have been able to impact it much. I would suggest that we take this time and go eat. Or whatever we need to do and come back at uh, twelve o'clock, at twelve o'clock and let's have an executive session after the regular meeting. If that's okay with the group.
That's fine.
Okay, if that's the case, um, I move to.
You need to make a motion to. Um, I motion to adjourn the uh, work session for December eighth.
Okay.
Properly move the secondhand discussion?
I I have a discussion. I'm actually a little.
Go ahead, Mister Kalid.
I mean, I I I hate being this this guy, but like, I'm actually a little concerned about that. But. By the time this meeting is over, and we have an eight hundred page agenda. We have like five, um, we have five zoning hearings. I'm anticipating that this meeting won't be over until like, I don't know, five, six o'clock. And then to go into executive session, which is sometimes the most difficult and contentious set of conversations that we have. After we have been meeting with each other all day, I don't. I just, I I'm worried about how that is actually going to go.
Thank you for your response, but let me, let me correct you on something. The. I continuously hear about the number of pages that sent to you all. That's because of the thoroughness of what the city manager and those have done. The, if you read it and you comprehend it, then we won't have a long meeting at all. So I I heard that on on a number of occasions. And uh, I've talked to to uh. To Ms. Jones, and Ms. Jones and I are going to even make it a little lot, little, even more simpler for you at the next meeting. So, roll call, please.
Roll call vote to adjourn the work session for November, December eighth. Councilmember Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Kalid?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Hi.
That motion is approved. This work session is adjourned at eleven twenty five.
I'll see everybody at the regular session.